Do we know if our people are hooked on yet?
Dr. Frederick is on.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. The August 21st, 2023 Board of Education Work Session is hereby called to order, and we do have a quorum. Our next item on our agenda is to have our invocation by Dr. Frederick. Dr. Frederick?
Yes, ma'am. All right, everybody bow their heads, please. All right, dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us today together in safety and in health. Please be with us with our decisions and our conversation. Look out for the kids always, and may the betterment of Grandville Public Schools always be in the forefront of our minds. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Mr. Peace, if you would lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please.
Let's begin, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, under item two, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Winmore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, board members, and team, and those in the audience and watching via video. I want to thank you all for your support this morning for what I consider to be a very successful convocation. I felt it was a great kickoff to the school year for all of our amazing staff members. And I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank some individuals for their hard work behind the scenes. Mr. Alston Shave, who helped really run the show, she was our quarterback, making sure that everything ran smoothly. And along with other staff, Jackie Baird, Angela Cogdill, Tonja Loftus, Sarah Moss, Lynn Henderson, Dinah Carter, Catherine Khalil, and others. It was just a real huge team effort. And I'd also like to thank the technology department. Guys, thank you so much for all your work. I know that it was a lot to handle, as well as our maintenance department. So again, just a real wonderful team effort today. As you all know, we start school in one week. Monday, August 28th is the first day of school for all of our traditional schools. Of course, early college has already been underway, and they're entering their third full week this week, and off to a great start. Board, just so you know, the senior staff and myself, we plan on being very present in schools next week when we kick things off. We want to make sure that if there's any last-minute issues or loose ends that need to be tied up, we'll be there for them to help them out. So you can expect to hear some reports from us about how things are going that first week. I also wanted to let you know that before our next regular board meeting, the North Carolina State Board of Education will be meeting to certify the results from last year's achievement data and school letter grades and the growth designations. And I expect to see an overall marginal improvement over the previous year, with some schools doing better than others in certain areas. Of course, you know, I've already picked through this data, as much of the team has in our principals as well. And it's very clear to me that you can draw a straight line from an area of low test scores to where we had a vacancy, or where we had some disruption in turnover during the school year. You know, it was just very evident in the data. And of course, you all know that we struggled with vacancies throughout the year, last year. But these results are going to be made public following, I think it's the September 6th state board meeting, and those letter grades are going to be assigned. And, you know, it is what it is. But right now, I'm more concerned with focusing forward on this school year, which is about to start. You know, we've looked at the data and learned what we can from it and made some adjustments. We have new staff in place now. We have new goals and the new areas of focus. So tonight, I think Ms. Kern's going to give you a staffing update, which is very encouraging to me compared to where we were this time last year. So I'm feeling very positive and very optimistic about this school year. And again, I can't say this enough, I am focused forward, okay? I'm not going to be looking in the rearview a lot unless it's going to provide us some hints about what we can improve. But with all of that being said, I want to thank you for accommodating this special work session. I know it was kind of last minute, but we don't have a lot on the agenda, but the things that we do are timely and important. So thank you, and the team and I stand ready to help. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Winmore, for your leadership today at the convocation. I think those of us that were there, it was sort of a contagious energy. I think I was tired when I got home. Felt like I had been at a pep rally. And the excitement of the teachers and staff was something else. And it's very good to see that kind of energy. When I left, I stopped by Holly and looked at how things were going, and it's really looking good. Of course, the teachers are busy, busy, unpacking their stuff, setting up their rooms and so forth, so I know they'll be ready when the time comes. I popped by Mount Energy and also stopped by Wilton for a while, and it looks like we've got a lot going on in the schools. Wilton's getting ready for a whole lot of new students, so that was interesting to hear. I think it's next Thursday. Some of us are going to a regional meeting in Raleigh at the North Carolina School Board Association, so we'll have a report back on that when we come back for our September meeting, unless we need to share some stuff with you by email. At the last meeting, we voted to establish a committee to look at how we can recruit and retain teachers. And the name of this committee, and Mrs. Courtney Kern is sort of spearheading this, the Human Resources Innovation Committee, and Dr. Frederick and Mrs. Hayes have both agreed to serve on that committee with this group, and I'll be there, of course, as well. So we're really excited about that. And we're really excited about all the new teachers that we have. We're excited about all the ones coming back too. So it was a good morning for Grandville County Public Schools. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And next, we have an item on the agenda, consent item, to approve Imagine Learning renewal contract for Phoenix Academy. Is there anything we need to know about this, or you want us just brief us real quickly what we're talking about here?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. If you recall, we made a shift last year with our staffing structure at Phoenix Academy, and we had so much trouble staffing the school with certified teachers. They were literally vacant throughout the year. We transitioned to edgenuities, Imagine Learning curriculum, and live teachers. And now we only have classified staff over at Phoenix Academy. So while this did incur some additional cost for us, it was mostly a wash in the overall budget for the school. And it went really, really well. All of the student outcome data from last year surpassed the previous years significantly. And the principal, Mr. Dickens, was very pleased with it, so we decided to renew this contract for this year. You'll notice there's also a smaller contract here, and this is for high school credit recovery courses, which are also available to students at his school, but we're making them available to those students at our other high schools that may need them as well.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve this contract?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is academic success, consolidated federal programs funding. Dr. Winmore?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Ms. Shelby Hunt, Mr. Jamar Perry, to come to the podium, and they're going to lead us in this presentation.
Good afternoon, board members. This afternoon, we are going to share with you information regarding our federal program of the fourth grant for the year, sorry, for the year, with the number of federal grants that we will apply for each year. So Ms. Hunt has led the charge here, which our federal program will provide you more information.
Good afternoon, board members. I come to you to present to you an overview of our 2324 Consolidated Programs application. NCDPI requires that the local boards of education review the proposed federal spending each year prior to submitting a LEA's consolidated federal application. The consolidated federal application consists of the four entitlement federal grants that are awarded to districts across the nation annually. The federal grants are given to state agencies, and then state agencies disseminate funds to the local LEAs based on students' enrollment and poverty rates. The consolidated federal application includes Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV Part A. This presentation provides an overview of the purpose, planning allotment, and the budget allocations for each of the federal grants that will be included in our federal application. Our LEA must allocate funding to the required set-asides for each federally mandated initiative. Finally, our federal consolidated application will be submitted to NCDPI after the local board of education has time to review and ask questions. The figures noted are subject to change based on feedback received from the state. So on the slide that you see now, you see this is Title I. This is Part A. It's one of our largest of our grant awards. The purpose is to provide supplemental assistance to our schools that are, serve high percentages of low-income families to ensure that all students are able to meet state standards. Title II Part A provides districts with supplemental support to build teacher and principal capacity. And Title III has two components. The first is language acquisition, and these funds provide districts with supplemental support to ensure that our English learners are able to achieve English-language proficiency and are able to master standards. The second component is language acquisition significant increase. These funds are to be used to provide supplemental assistance to our students who may be immigrants or newcomers to the U.S. Lastly, the Title IV Part A funds are used to provide students with opportunities to become well-rounded students. Grant initiatives include safety, healthy, and technology initiatives. So as you can see on the screen, this year, we have been awarded over $2.7 million to cover all of our consolidated federal programs. Next slide. Title I school programs, again, this is allocated to district-wide initiatives and Title I school-based initiatives, with all of the schools' base initiatives receiving the largest share of the funding. All of these schools are provided with an allocation that is based on poverty rate and student enrollment. The majority of total school-based allocations are spent on staffing. Principals have the autonomy to determine how to spend the remaining funds. However, these funds may be spent on evidence-based strategies that are in accordance with the school's comprehensive needs assessment results, and their school improvement, school-wide plan goals, and action steps. So as you can see here, this is a preliminary budget of how much money each school should be able to receive for this year. Next slide. Here, in this one, this is also in addition to the school-based set-asides. Title I has several required district set-asides. The description of the funding priorities and the total allocation for the 2324 are set for each listed above on the slide. Those set-asides include ESOL required reservations such as parent and family engagement, and supports for our homeless foster care and neglected and delinquent programs, Title I pre-K, district initiatives, and professional development, reservations for the overall implementation and administration of the grant fund. So as you can see, these are set-asides where we will cover some of our district initiatives aside from what the schools have been allocated to them for this year. Next slide. Title II has several districts set-asides. However, there are no required school-based set-asides. The description of the funding priorities for each set-aside are listed on the slide. Those set-asides include ESOL required reservations for quality PD for educators and administrators, recruitment and retention, and reservations for the overall implementation and administration of the grant fund. So as you can see here, this is where we pay for our AP Academy. We do a lot of our recruitment and retention with our beginning teacher support program, as well as we have some positions that are paid out of Title II as well. Next slide. Title III has several different set-asides. However, there are no required school-based set-asides. The description of the funding priorities for each set-aside are listed on the slide. Those include, those sets aside include ESOL required reservations for supporting English learners, and reservations for the overall implementation and administration of the grant fund. And in this budget, this is where we pay for some of our work, where we have PD that comes in to help support our ESL teachers. We also pay for resources that are needed and programs that they use as well for the ESL department. Next slide. Title IV Part A has several district set-asides. However, there are no required school-based set-asides. The description of the funding priorities for each set-aside are listed on the slide. Those set-asides include ESOL required reservations for safe and healthy students, well-rounded education initiatives, and the effective use of technology, as well as reservations for the overall implementation and administration of the grant fund. And here, this is where we pay for some of our SEL material. Also, we have some positions that come out of here. Technology has a small portion of funds that is used across the district, and where we have our global schools, money comes out of there for here, as well as for our leadership school. We pay for their fees to have their training, as well as we help to pay for Mount Energy's character program at their school. Next slide. I am recommending that the federal consolidated programs plan be approved by the board. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, back to the first slide with the, at the bottom, it says that it's got carryover. Is that included in that total or not included?
That is not included in that total.
Do you have any idea how much the carryover is from last year?
We are, well, we're about at $800,000, because we're still spending money as of currently. We're still paying out all of our summer programs. All of that stuff is still coming out.
Okay, gotcha.
We still have a whole other month to go. So, yes.
And on the next slide, where it lists all the schools, those numbers, so it says it's based off of their poverty rate and student enrollment. Did we base that off of last year's poverty rate and student enrollment?
Yes, I have to pull all numbers in May. So I have to sit one day in May and pull it from everyone's school enrollment numbers. And I got the numbers also from the Cafeteria Child Nutrition as far as free reduced lunch numbers. Yes, ma'am. So in the past, I will say that we have been able to use, we were held harmless and use old numbers, but these are accurate numbers this year.
Based off of us not having Creve More Elementary and how many students are currently enrolled at that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was wondering. Okay.
Let me ask you a question. It's on the last two or three slides that you provided. You know, we were just showing the different titles. If you could go, keep on through till you get to about the latter part, yeah, keep on down. Yeah, these, those figures there that you were showing, no, no, back, the last two or three slides, when you show, you showed these figures here. Now, as those amounts that you set aside, then do you all make determinations per school, per that, you know? When you set those aside, but you don't have the schools, like the pre-K and the reservations, how do you break that down per, you know, the schools?
So with the amount that the schools get, that amount that's on the screen, that preliminary amount, they get to spend that on their needs based upon their comprehensive needs assessment. So they have to do a comprehensive needs assessment, which every school has done that earlier this school year. So once they do that, they can pay for positions, or they can pay for resources for that. As far as like pre-K, it's like a district incentive. So we do pay for teachers, the pre-K teachers, a certain percentage, as well as the teacher assistants, a certain percentage out of the Title I funds.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? If not, thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Madam Chair, and Ms. Hunt, if I may, I know that the funds that Ms. Hunt has presented tonight are not the only federal funds that we receive in our district. And I know, for example, you and I had talked about the EC program. They, of course, receive federal fundings. Our CTE program receives federal fundings, but those are different categories than this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next item, under academic success.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the federal programs funding as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next item is 402 Policy Code 3460 Graduation Requirements.
So I'll ask Mr. Perry and Ms. Salisbury to briefly cover this topic.
Board members, again, just want to bring to your attention Policy Code 3460, which was approved back in the February of 2022, I believe. And we noticed that there was some information that was inadvertently omitted from that policy during revision, and we're bringing those updates to you this afternoon. Salisbury?
So this policy has six different options for graduation requirements, based on whether the student is in the future-ready core course of study or the future-ready occupational course of study. And both of those depend on the year that the student entered the ninth grade. So this looks like a big, complicated policy, but it's really not. The edit that we bring to you this afternoon is adding the six local elective requirements for a total of 28 graduation requirements. In the revision that you have in front of you, we actually typed in the six in the wrong column. We should have added that under the local requirements column. And then under the local requirements column for the total is where the 28 should be. So we will get that corrected. It is important to say that all graduates in both the 22 and the 23 school years met our local requirement of 28 credits or were approved for the minimum credit diploma. The main difference in all of those charts is the graduation requirements for social studies. Those changed in the year 2021, and that is the update, the difference in all those different charts. And just for clarity, I have a chart for you from DPI that shows the different social studies graduation requirements based on the year that the students entered the ninth grade. The revision this afternoon is just to add in the six local elective requirements for a total of 28. And this revision is presented to you as a first read.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there some discussion being held at DPI now, or the state board, or the legislature? On changing the requirements, again, the number?
I have not heard any about the number. No, ma'am.
Okay. So if it is, it's not far enough along that it would affect us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
I will say that about two years ago, right after COVID, when we knew that some students had, were short on a couple of credits, we did, I did extensive research on all of the districts around us, and whether or not they had a high school block schedule, and what the total number of requirements from that local district were. And we are in line with all of the other districts around us who have a block schedule with their 28 requirements. If you think about, students have eight possible courses that they can pass each of four years, so that's a total of 32 courses.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This comes to us as an action item to approve this change, correction. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Policy Code 3460 as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Before we go to, I'm sorry, before we go to close session, I was wondering if we could add two things. I had something come before me, and it felt more like a work session discussion than a regular board session discussion. So, but it's up to the board. One was to have a discussion about the bill number 306, calendar flexibility. And then the other one was some possible way to track Board of Education terms. I think that would be a good thing to come up with.
What was the last one?
It's up to them.
I didn't get it.
Some sort of, I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking into the mic, some way to, you know, track Board of Education terms internally, whether that's with our clerk or whatever. I think that would be a good practice to probably start.
So I think the motion to amend the agenda to add those two?
Yes. Motion to amend the agenda to add two discussions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. No problem with it.
Okay. So the first one was for the calendar flexibility bill that Representative Sossaman included us in. And, you know, I don't know if any of you guys have seen this, but a lot of the other public school districts have just kind of decided to do their own thing, because apparently all of those bills are stuck in the Senate. And so I had a conversation with Representative Sossaman about what we could do as a board, because, you know, we knew that we were sticking to our calendar this year, but it would be really, really nice if we did have that flexibility, like legally, next year, to do that. And so he basically gave us the green light to kind of do whatever we felt was necessary. But I was thinking, I think before what we did was just kind of like a letter of support, but maybe a first act would be like a joint resolution with the county commissioners would kind of be like a first step. If anybody has any thoughts.
Ma'am, a resolution with the, as far as us moving into this direction further, as far as looking at that?
To support moving the bill, to try to get it passed. So that would be, and the great thing, again, about that, the bill that Representative Sossaman was that it, we can kind of flex as we want to. There were very wide parameters in the bill, and so it would allow us to make the decisions for ourselves, to either stay where we are, or, you know, move our, move our calendar up, or, you know, kind of flex it whatever way we felt was best for our students and staff. And so that's why it was a really great bill.
Yeah, I really liked the bill. My reading said that, too, there are some systems that are just going full speed ahead without considering what the state law is. I think we, are we saying that we are going to make a resolution to do that, or just a resolution to push this bill forward that we presented?
I would personally like for us to try the legal route, maybe, to support, to support the bill, a joint resolution with the county commissioners. I think they would be on board. We had a lot of county commissioner support at the convocation this morning. And so I think that would be a great, maybe, first step to see, you know, if we can maybe get some movement.
If the board is interested, I could bring a draft resolution to the, well, let me say this, timing-wise, we would want, I suppose, the commissioners or their staff to review a draft before we bring it from the, anyway, I could draft a draft. I don't know, maybe we send it through liaisons first, so that they've seen it, or to, you know, the county manager, or whatever, whatever you guys think. Yeah, but I just think like a strong showing of support between our two boards, and just, you know, that we are laser-focused on education, and that, giving us that flexibility would really support that.
Yeah, I think it's just really sad that our one industry, and I understand that the tourism industry, but people travel all the time now, and it really seems antiquated to me. But anything that will move that along, I think is a good idea.
And, I mean, I'm not trying to call out names, but, you know, if anybody watching or anybody in the public wants to send a letter of support, or a note, or a phone call to a legislator, Phil Berger, is the one holding up all the Senate bills for calendar flexibility? flexibility, so.
Somebody need to vote him in office, that's what need to happen.
I just, you know, community support's always welcome too. Okay, do we need to vote or anything, or is that just general support?
Yeah, consensus. We have a consensus to work through a draft, so I'll hopefully do a first draft and circulate it to one.
Dr. Frederick, do you, are you good with that?
Yep, I'm good with it, I support.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm going to see where that guy's district is.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Okay, and then the second one was, you know, we're all aware that there's been a little discontent over the, you know, last year's election, and so I thought maybe a good first step would be for us to give some direction for our administration, and I don't know what that would look like, to maybe a spreadsheet or something to kind of track board terms, because it is complicated when people resign, you know, and we have actually four, I think, four seats going up next year, and I thought that it would be, again, a really good first step to, you know, have something that's created and a direction and people that are responsible for that, and I don't know if that would be the clerk or the secretary, and of course, we would want it to be legal and make sure that everything is following the statutes. But I think that would be a good.
Yeah, I think that it would make sense to, if we could, it's difficult, because obviously, a process that only happens every one or three years is, can be hard to maintain, but something where a notice to the election director was triggered whenever anyone resigns or is appointed is really what I think we need.
Right. And then, I mean, you know, to keep those, and then also, that would, that would create a record, right, so that going forward, you know what I mean, it would be something for people to, to look back on, so.
Well, we'll move on that, yeah. I don't think that really needs a vote, at this time, we'll just come up.
But yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Awesome.
I think just, just the process for how we get there would be.
We'll do our part, and then hopefully the board elections will do what they're responsible for.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, one point of clarification, the item for the two that Ms. Hayes just covered, the graduation requirements, this was recommended as a first read, was the approval, I heard, the way I heard Ms. Hayes' approval, her motion was that it be approved, skipping, like, would that mean that it goes?
Yeah, I don't see any reason for a second read, did anybody?
Just amend that a motion to?
You guys good?
Eliminate a first read, I mean, a second read.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Pass it on the first read.
So is there, is there consensus from the board to clarify that the idea was to waive second read?
Do I need to make an amendment to my motion?
Correct.
Amend my motion to pass first read and just approve the policy.
To wait?
Wait first, sorry, waive second read, that's.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Motion passes. All right. We have come to the point where we will be making a motion to go in closed session, and we'll take about a 10-minute break to do so. Do we have a motion to go in closed session?
Second.
For the purposes of what is listed on the agenda, rather than reading them, that's what we say, is what's on the agenda. Okay. Who seconded that?
I do.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like us. Motion passes. We'll take a 10-minute, thank you. All right, do we have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Motion to approve certified and classified personnel report as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We now need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, Dr. Frederick, for tuning in with us today.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Thank you.